Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 6:32 PM and a quorum of members is present, so the meeting of the Board of Education of the School District of New Berlin is called to order. Please call the roll.
Ms. Crosby?
Here.
Mr. Helmer?
Here.
Ms. Conick?
Here.
Mr. Kurth?
Here.
Ms. Schulz?
Here.
Mr. Seidel?
Here.
Ms. Spindler?
Here.
I would entertain a motion to recess to close session.
I move to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 (1C) ENF of the Wisconsin statutes to consider: A) the approval of closed session minutes of October 11th; and B) the employment performance and compensation matters pertaining to staff; and C) the review of possible third-party administrator change.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Seidel. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kurth?
Yes.
Mr. Seidel?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby? Mr. Helmer?
Yes.
Ms. Conick?
Yes.
Ms. Schulz?
Yes.
Ms. Spindler?
Yes.
We're moving into closed session and return to open session around 7 o'clock.
It is now seven oh five and we are returning from closed session into open session. In recognition of the serious and important nature of our efforts here, we will join in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. For all those who are able, please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and
And now for those who wish to prepare for the meeting, we will have a moment of silence. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the public last Friday by providing the agenda to the City Library. The agenda was also posted on the district website. A copy of the agenda was forwarded to the Journal Sentinel, the Waukesha Freeman, and the Waukesha Now, all of which have filed requests for all public notices. Do we have anybody for the privilege of the floor this evening?
No.
Okay. Then President's message, just have a brief message. Thank you to the students from New Berlin West Middle School for all the thank you cards. That's very nice. So I'll just pass this around to the board members. And also last week, I should have mentioned there were many thank yous also to us. Each of us had a nice packet, so we appreciate that from our students. Also, members, I did send out an email this weekend, taking a poll to see your interest in continuing to meet at the individual schools as we've done in the last two years, if you want to continue that. So I was taking a poll, so please respond back to that. And also in regards to the superintendent evaluation. So please read that email and I need your response back to that. Next, we have the administrative team report, the superintendent's update, and the student representative update.
Yeah, so just want to just briefly give a shout out to all of our staff and employees that helped out with the International Heritage Festival, which was last weekend, not this past weekend, the weekend before. I think we had over seven hundred and fifty attendees, roughly, there. It coincided with the Discover New Berlin Chamber event. And again, just grateful for everybody that was involved in the planning and the implementation of that event. And so with that, I'd like to officially introduce your newest school board representative, Claire Markowski. Claire doesn't realize this, but I'm going to ask her to actually give her, give a little bit of background of her. And she actually went through a pretty rigorous process, was recommended by her administrative team, then was vetted by myself and Ann. And it was a tough choice, but I think she's going to be up, up for the challenge with, with this school board. So Claire, if you could give us a little background of, of things that you're involved in and kind of why you're interested in doing this, and then give us your update.
Nice to meet everyone. So yeah, I'm Claire Markowski. I'm in DECA Student Union. I'm on the student athlete, athlete leadership team recently this year. I play soccer. I'm on the high school varsity team. I was a freshman on the state champ team. I'm very proud to say that. And then our runner up or finalist this past year. Yeah, so as we're wrapping up the second month of school, students and teachers are striving for success, both in the classroom and on the sports field. Earlier in September, juniors and sophomores took the pre ACT to prepare them for the future. Four talented students are National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalists. Seniors Keegan Tadic, Demetria Lichnovich, Sal Prothville, and Nathan Catania have been given the opportunity to compete for this scholarship that will be available in the spring. In the classroom, AP Chemistry students dive deeper into their labs as they focus on titration, while AP Biology students learn more about cell membranes through a fun bubble lab. In the engineering classroom, students are putting their problem solving skills to the test as they work to fix an issue throughout the whole school year. Personal lifetime fitness is keeping students active as they went through fitness testing in this past week. We recently wrapped up a Fun Filled Under the Sea themed homecoming week full of spirit and activities. Spirit days ranged from fake an injury to on Wednesdays, we wear pink. Kicking off the week, there was an in-school assembly led by student union members. Students of all grades participated in various challenges and games that got the crowd cheering them on. Food Truck Friday, provided by Ike Care Club, was a great way to end off the week and get some delicious food. Part of Puff was rescheduled for the following Monday, but that did not take away the excitement that filled the night, ending with the seniors winning. Clubs are more active than ever in the school and in the community. DECA has had various events, including Call Verznight and Miracle Minute during the homecoming football game. They are currently preparing for the popular trick-or-can fundraiser. Culture Club recently hosted the International Heritage Fair. Students had fun creating origami and holding some slithery animals. Ike Care Club was also at the festival, providing a yummy assortment of various foods. Athletically, Eisenhower has had great, great success in their fall sports. Postseason is currently underway, and the stands have been filled with supportive fans. In tennis, senior Karina Heinrich and sophomore Kiva Slonak were qualifiers for the WIAA State Championship. Junior Faith Women recently got nominated for Milwaukee Journal's Athlete of the Week after her record-breaking run during the conference championship. Lastly, Ike Theater had no shorter than an amazing performance of the Brothers Grimm Play. Students of all different grades came together and put on a wonderful show for parents and students to enjoy.
Thank you, Claire. And as a reminder to the board, we do have a board representative from Ike and West. They serve two-year terms on behalf of the board. And so Claire is a junior and will be serving on behalf of the Ike student community for the next two school years. So thank you, Claire. Welcome.
All right, then we have our district reports. There is not an incident report this time. There was an enrollment report, and we also had the suspension report and a donation report. Mr. Seidel, would you please read the donation report?
It'd be my pleasure. The first donation was from EMN Sandwiches LLC for Elmwood. Support Elmwood with a general donation in the amount of $210. The second one was for Elmwood. Elmwood Home and School. Support Playworks at Elmwood in the amount of $2,200. The third one is for Ronald Reagan. Ronald Reagan Home and School. Support Ronald Reagan with funds for a bus for a third grade field trip in the amount of $500. Lastly, for Ronald Reagan, Ronald Reagan Home and School to support Ronald Reagan with Buns, Bus, Funds for a Bus in fourth grade field trip in the amount of $500. Total donations for the district were $3,410. Thank you so much to our generous donors, and that ends my report.
Thank you. The next item on is the consent agenda, which includes notice, the approval of minutes of the board meeting on October 11th, our financial reports, and the annual approval of the safety plan. Are there any items that should be pulled out for separate consideration? Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Helmer to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Onto the regular agenda. First on the regular agenda is to discuss approve the original budget for the school year ending June 30th of 2024.
So we are now at the point of seeking the board's approval of the final budget. As the board is aware, in the spring, we typically give you a proposed incoming budget, followed by a preliminary budget that I believe was approved in June. And now that we have all of the information from the state, well, actually, we did have the budget hearing and annual meeting last month, and now we have all of the details from the state to propose a final budget to the board. So we're seeking two approvals tonight. One specifically is the actual, is the budget, and then secondarily, the levy amount. So Patrick, go ahead.
Thanks, Joe. So tonight, we are happy to provide information on the final 2324 fiscal year budget. These are, again, I'm not going to go through quite as long a presentation as I did for the preliminary budget or for the annual meeting. Mainly, what I'm going to do is take a look at the property tax levy for this original budget, and then any highlighted changes from the annual meeting budget to the original budget. All of the detail is provided in a booklet, same as the preliminary budget and the annual meeting. So the property tax levy for the original budget, the fiscal 24 tax levy that was presented at the annual meeting was a little over 45 million. The current original budget tax levy is 42.6 million. It's a change of 2.69 million dollars. Almost a 6% reduction resulting in a reduction of our mill rate. The anticipated mill rate was $6.81. It is currently $5.87. That is a significant reduction due largely to the 30% increase in state aid and, and almost a 12% increase in property values. So your mill rate is going down to under $6,000.
Real quick, that number, the state aid didn't change since the last meeting, right?
Yes, it did.
Oh, did it? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. What did we have factored in for the property rate increase? That was the other piece of that, right?
Correct. Originally, we had put in an assumed property value increase of, I think I had put 5%
Okay.
in for the annual meeting. And those property values came in on the first of October at 11.9%.
Okay. Thank you.
I do want to point out, as we move forward, Patrick, that just because the number dropped in the levy, I know there was a misconception out there that that meant we were getting less money as a school district. That's not the case. It just means the money is coming in from state aid and not local property taxpayers. So the net sum stays the same, but our community members are experiencing more tax relief as a result of it.
And those items will be summarized in the adjustments since the budget hearing. So this would be since the, the last board meeting in September, there was an 8% decrease in local revenue based on higher state aid. So the local revenue is lower, but not the total revenue. As Joe just said, we are getting, we received a little over 30% increase in state aid. We did have an 8% increase in general fund expenses. Much of that was related to staffing and some benefits coding. So again, we use a very sophisticated system of coding in Wisconsin Public Education. And so it, if you were to look at our budget, it looks like there's an increase of a little over $600,000 where it is not actually an increase. It's just a shift in how we were coding some of the benefits. So we also had an 8% increase in special education revenue and expenses, most of that due to additional staffing that is related to the student population. The other funds really had no significant budget adjustments since the September meeting, and the property value did increase 9% from the annual meeting to now. Here's a snapshot of our current estimated tax levy impact. The bottom line, you can see an 11.83% increase in property values, a reduction of 4.7% in the tax levy, and our equalized property value levy rate from 689 last year to 587, a 14.77% reduction. And our equalized property value levy rate from 689 last year to 587, a 14.77% reduction. No. I'm sorry, yes, of course.
The 11.83% on this slide for the change, that's property value increases and new construction.
Well, you're correct. It's increases in the overall property value in, in the city that's in the district. So this would include increases in property value would be any new properties that came on the market and were added to the tax roll. This also includes the 160 parcels transferred from the West Dallas, West Milwaukee detachment.
Oh, I didn't even think of that. Forgot about that, too. Okay. And then the slide before that says property value increase of 9%. That's, if your home was worth X last year, it's 9% more this year.
No, that's actually, that's an increase of 9% from the last meeting. So I was estimating
Okay.
um, a little over four, right around 4%, 4 or 5% for the increase, and it actually came in significantly higher.
Okay, thanks. Sorry for the clarity.
So then this is the last slide in, in the budget presentation. And this is just a breakdown for, of our tax levy. Roughly $36 million for general school operations, that's Fund 10 levy. $3.6 million for non-referendum debt, that's both ESCO and non-ESCO debt. $2,225,000 to the capital expenditures, Fund 41. $3,320 for prior year uncollectible taxes. And that's just one of those things where if the city, we tax the city. And if there's something that, if there's a piece of property that the taxes are not collectible, they charge that back to us. But then in the next year, we can levy for that amount. So just a lot of, a lot of moving around for, you know, $3,000. $800,000 for community service projects at Fund 80. For a total of $42,621,284 taxed to be levied upon all property real and personal within the bounds of the school district of New Berlin.
Patrick, I'd like to comment, too, that one of the board's goals was to levy up to $1.25 million in Fund 41. This certainly exceeds that goal and expectation, as you mind your respective goals. Thank you. Job.
Thanks. I see that this presentation currently is under administrative. Can we make that public now that you just did? Okay. All right. Well, then we need a motion to approve the original budget for the school year ending June 30th, 2024.
Motion to approve? Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm staying out of this one. Go ahead and you two find it out.
Let Amy go.
I move to approve the original budget for the school year ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Crosby and a second by Mr. Kurth to approve the original budget for the school year ending June 30th of 2024. Is there any discussion?
I just have one question. Um, part of the budget is the student count, right? Is part of the budget formula our student count?
Yes.
And did that change in our September count? Was it significant?
No, there was not a significant change in our September count. Actually, because of the three-year rolling average, our, our rolling third Friday count went down, even though our enrollment has been higher the last two years, simply because three years ago, we had a very large reduction. It was like 140 students. Our count went down, and so that 100 and, 140, 130, 140 students stays on our revenue limit for three years. So this is the last year of that. Next year, if our enrollment remains stable, we should start to see our three-year average go up again.
Any other discussion? Then all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. And then we have to discuss approve the school district in New Berlin property tax levy for the 2023-24 school year in the amount of $42,621,284, including $2,225,000 for capital expansion projects. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Could you actually say it? Sorry, we need, we need it in official.
I'll make a motion to approve the school district of New Berlin property tax levy for the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of $42,621,284, including $2,225,000 for capital expansion projects.
Second.
All right. So I have a motion by Mr. Seidel, a second by Mr. Kurth to approve. Is there any discussion on this? Then all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. And we have an action item from closed session.
I move to approve the employment performance compensation matters pertaining to staff as presented or?
Yeah.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Helmer to approve. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. And we have our future meetings and dates, which are generally held the second and fourth Mondays, beginning at 7:00 PM in this conference room at the district offices, unless noted otherwise. Our next meeting is November 13th, then we have one November 27th. December 11th will be our only meeting in December. Other important events and dates to remember is November 3rd, there is no school, that is a staff professional learning day. November 10th is Veterans Day program at New Berlin West. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Helmer and a second by Mr. Kurth to adjourn. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. This meeting is adjourned.